Morning. Sorry for the delay. Had some administrative action that we had to deal with. That we would normally be doing during the presentations because we have no presentations today and it caused a slight delay. I want to thank you for your patience. Everybody will take their seat. All the guests and visitors retire behind the rail. We'll get started as soon as I see today's invocation to start the council session. We have our own spiritual advisor. We will have Councilwoman Janie Blackwell will give today's prayer and I'd ask all guests and visitors to please rise and members.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We know it is only through thy grace that we're alive and that we're able to be here this morning. Heavenly Father, we ask that you help us to make the right decisions on this very important day, our last day of City Council. We ask that you bless those who are here, our old members and our new members who come to visit us each week. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless those who are hungry, those who are homeless, those who are unemployed, those who have so many, those who are incarcerated. We ask you to bless those people who had problems in another city when they were having prayer service and someone decided to come in and shoot and kill eight people. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless us in West Philly, people who have had a problem with the water department with the flood. We ask that you bless them in a special way. We have people living there without any utilities who are afraid to leave their homes because they're afraid that their properties will be robbed. And Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the privilege of service. Help us to always keep our mind on our mission. Again, we thank you for this day. Nana to him who is able to keep you from falling, to present you faultless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy to the only wise God our Father, be glory and majesty, dominion and power, both now and forevermore. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Thank you. Grab your attention, please. Quiet. We're gonna, we're gonna get started in earnest. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, June 11, 2015, and the chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 11, 2015 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 11, 2015. Stand and approve, all those in favor. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the Journal is approved. Councilwoman Brown, you want to be recognized?
After we welcome guests and visitors.
Okay, thank you. The next order of business is a request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested by Councilwoman Marion Tascow.
Chair, thanks to the gentleman. Leave shall be granted. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. I want to apologize for our tardiness, but things happen. I really appreciate the fact that you've come here. It means a lot to us for you to be engaged with your government, so we hope that your experience here today is a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you. As I said earlier, there are no presentations, so the next order of business is recognizing Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. In keeping with your remarks to extended warm welcome to visitors and guests, we are always excited when we have young people who decide to witness us in action, and I'm thrilled and pleased to introduce to some young ladies from my alma mater, Philadelphia High School for Girls, who had an orientation this morning by Councilwoman Bass, office and myself, so we'd like to ask those ladies to stand. And we also have two sophomores here from Syracuse University, Jameek Jenkins and Brielle Brown, who are here also to witness this final session of Philadelphia City Council. We thank you, Mr. President. Let's welcome them.
Welcome. Welcome, and thank you so much for coming down. The next order of business is communications, and the chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hallmark Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 140519, 150467, 150469, 150473, 150475, 150487, 150488, 150489, 150490, 150491, 150492, 150493, 150494, 150495, 150496, 150499, 150501, 150502, 150503, no, 150504, 150512, 150515, and 150516. And I am pleased to advise you that on June 16, 2015, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on June 4, 2015, Bill Number 150266. And then on June 16, 2015, I signed the following bills which are passed by council at its session on June 11, 2015. Bill numbers 140721, 150239, 150264, and 150355. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and or renewal of a portion of model cities or newer area identified by house number and street addresses, 1513 Brown Street, and authorizing the redevelopment authority to execute the redevelopment contract with 1511 1515 Brown Street Limited Liability Corporation to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number 44 by striking from the city plan and vacating a certain triangulally shaped portion of Lancaster Avenue located at the northerly side of Market Street and the easterly side of 32nd Street. And an ordinance authorizing the plotting upon a portion of City Plan Number 41 S of a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes approximately 30 feet by 25 feet in the area lying north of Patterson Avenue and east of the Delaware Expressway, and authorizing the acceptance of the grant to the city of the said right-of-way, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Next order of business is introducing the bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 9206 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors and Neighborhood Business Districts by creating the Drexel University District.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the version of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number 44 by striking from the city plan and vacating a certain triangulally shaped portion of Lancaster Avenue located at the northerly side of Market Street and the easterly side of 32nd Street.
Refer to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer two bills and one resolution.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen.
An ordinance authorizing 1919 Market to construct on and maintain various right-of-way encroachments at 1919 Market Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Stacy Reed, owner and operator of the new stand located at the southwest corner of Broad and Vine Street, to construct, use, and maintain condo within under and across the southwest corner of Broad and Vine Street.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees, can pay conditional fees, simple type of association, and lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 47th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on the next session's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 3207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Fuel Oil by modifying certain requirements for reporting the sulfur content of stored commercial fuel oil in connection with certain case-by-case exemptions.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the crew of the USS Dace on the reunion, on their reunion weekend of September 11 through 13, 2015.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognize, oh, you have one more, I'm sorry.
And a privileged resolution showing support for the City of Philadelphia Flood Risk Management Task Force by offering engaged partnership and thoughtful consideration of forthcoming recommendations.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Thank you, Mr. Decker, and chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I have two privileges and one non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the plotting upon a portion of City Plan Number 41 S of a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes approximately 30 feet by 25 feet in the area lying north of Patterson Avenue and east of the Delaware Expressway.
That will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 14503 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCA Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay by adding a new subsection entitled South Broad Street Gateway.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees, can pay conditional fees, simple type of association, and lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And next, next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three privileged resolutions and two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance legalizing an existing stair enclosure at 5070 Whittaker Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Monica Torres to construct on and maintain a structural encroachment at 4165 North 6th Street.
Also refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the outstanding hard work and dedication of Jesse Bermudez to Philadelphia Latin, Philadelphia's Latin music scene and declaring July 8, 2015 as Jesse Bermudez Day.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Hector Masonabe for his dedication to the Latino and salsa communities in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and declaring July 6 through the 12, 2015 as siempre salsa Philly Week.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to offer today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills to introduce today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Bill Number 150163A, approved June 18, 2015, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal 2016 Capital Budget by Adding and Revising Certain Projects.
That bill will refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code of the Philadelphia Code by amending Subcode B, the Philadelphia Building Code, by adding, by adding new requirements for food waste disposers in some new residential construction.
Refer to committee.
And, and ordinance amending Bill Number 150162A, approved June 18, 2015, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Six Fiscal Years 2016 through 2021 Included by Adding and Revising Certain Projects Amounts and Sources.
And that will also be referred to committee, and chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you for spreading off of one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 within the general fund from the City Council to the Director of Finance Contribution to School District.
Refer to the appropriate committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer two bills and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Chapter 14700 entitled Development Standards by revising minimum lot area requirements and other dimensional requirements in certain residential zoning districts.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 171600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to provide for the preparation and filing of an annual report by the director of, by the finance director that analyzes the extent of workforce diversity on projects and contracts requiring economic opportunity plans and identifies appropriate workforce diversity goals for future projects and contracts.
Will also be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Education and Law and Government to conduct public hearings to examine the low voter turnout in primary and general elections in the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a privileged resolution cosponsored by Squilla, Brown, Good, Sanchez, Bass, Johnson, Blackwell, Greenly, and O.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and commemorating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when slaves were freed in the United States of America more than 150 years ago, and further celebrating National Juneteenth Independence Day, which is also known as Freedom Day on Friday, June 19, 2015.
That will be on today's final passes calendar, and chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President, for one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the institutional development district master plan of the Holy Redeemer Lafayette Retirement Community located at 8560 Berry Road by allowing for an addition to the skilled nursing building.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 13S and abandoning of a certain right-of-way reserved for gas main purposes which extends from Fourth Street to Fifth Street north of Dickinson Street.
That bill will be referred to committee. And chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two now privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring Glenn Bergman for his outstanding and memorable 11 years of service as the general manager of the Weaver's Food Co-op and congratulating him on his new position as Executive Director of Philabundance.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs to investigate and hold hearings on the preservation and expansion of the city's public art, including its voluminous collection of outdoor murals and sculptures.
And that resolution will also be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one bill and seven privileged resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code, Chapter 12800 Bicycle Regulations and Penalties, Chapter 12913 Prohibitions in Specified Places, and Chapter 122800 Administrative Adjudication of Parking Violations by making it mandatory for persons riding bicycles to ride on designated bicycle lanes when available, and imposing new penalties and increasing the current penalty for vehicles blocking designated bike lanes.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and commemorating August 26, 2015 as Women's Equality Day in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and commemorating August 21, 2015 as National Senior Citizens Day in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Michael P. Pasquale for his dedication to helping members of the Armed Forces and Veterans with service-connected disability claims.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing September 11, 2015 as Patriot Day in Philadelphia to remember and reflect on the tragedy and heroism resulting from the September 11, 2001 terrorist attacks on the United States.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution calling upon all Philadelphians to recognize the prominent history of the American flag and celebrate the importance of the flag of the United States by flying 10,000 American flags throughout the City of Philadelphia.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution calling upon all Philadelphians to appreciate and enthusiastically participate in Restaurant Week in Center City, Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution respectfully requesting Congress to award a Congressional Gold Medal collectively to the Filipino veterans of World War II in recognition of their dedicated service to the United States from July 26, 1941 to December 31, 1946.
Councilman, today, a suspension? You want it next week? I mean, next, or you want a suspension of the rules for today?
Yes, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules for today.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules be suspended to allow the reading of today's resolution on this week's final passes calendar. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution will be on today's final passes calendar. That concludes the introduction of the bills and resolutions, and we will now have the consideration of the calendar. The next order of business is consideration of this calendar. The Chief Clerk will please read the bill on the first reading calendar today.
Bill Number 150370 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use by the City of premises located at 2800 South 20th Street.
Chair agrees, and this bill will be placed on the second reading and final passes calendar our next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on second reading and final passes calendar. Numbers. Okay. All right. Excuse me. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on final passes calendar. Resolutions. 150575, 150576, 150577, 150578, 150579, 150580, 150582, 150583, 150584, 150585, 150586, 150593, and 150598.
Thank you. It's been properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended. So suspend the use of a consent agenda, consider resolutions just read by Councilman Jones. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. We will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on second reading and final passes calendars. Numbers. 130656AA, 140607A, 150466A, 150500A, 150895, 150376, 150377, 150378, 150379, 150215, 150232, 150236, 150284, 150285, 150288, 150289, 150350, 150351, 150473, 150487, 150488, 150489, 150490, 150492, 150494, 150442, 150443, 150445, 150469, 150501, 150512, 150213, 150272, 150405, 150440, 150411, 150491, 150492, 150494, 150442, 150443, 150445, 150469, 150501, 150527, 150216, 150277, 150278, 150505, 150506, 150513, 150514, 150515, 150516, 150472, 150505, and 150465.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda, consider the bills just read by Councilman Jones. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions and bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passes calendar today. Numbers. 150390, 150599, 150441A, 150406, 150375, 150380, 150093, 150162, 150163, 150164, 150165, 150167, 150531, 150533, 150534, 150535, 150409, 150265, 150507, 150508, 150509, and 150510. All of the bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Chair recognize, does not, okay. Not going to do it. Councilman, come in.
Thank you, Council President. My apology on the delay over clarification of a procedural matter, but I want to thank you, and I want to touch on something before we adjourn today, before we move on with our process here. I refer Bill Number 150406 back to committee. I did this so that we have an opportunity to engage in a more thorough debate on the current conditions of our jails and in the criminal justice system that populate, and the populates, and who populates them. On an issue like this, I recognize that we need to create unity and consensus. I refer this bill back to committee to give every member of this body and the public time to, and the opportunity to engage and reflect. I'm not going to go through my position on the issue point by point, but I've done that already on the record. But I do would like to reiterate three points. I believe, I believe the construction of the replacement prison in a matter of both fiscal necessity and basic human rights. We cannot afford for the federal government to step in for a fourth time and force us to build another prison. Two, we cannot continue to confuse the public by conflating school desks and prison beds. I've listened to a member of this body to do that, and it needs to stop. It's reckless and it's wrong. We should not ignore the responsibilities to those who are housed and work inside the House of Corrections walls, no matter how long they are there. As we move forward, I'm extending an invitation. Yesterday, after a meeting with Council President, yourself, Mr. Clark, and, and I stated the process of forming a working group aimed at exploring many of these issues that have been raised about incarceration in Philadelphia. I asked my colleague, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, to co-chair this effort, as well as Councilman Danny O'Brien, to join us as well. I have had extended conversations with both of these members over the past several weeks. Both have a history of leadership on these issues, and both have expressed interest in moving Philadelphia forward regarding their concerns and experience. The goal will be to create opportunities for discussion and define ways that Philadelphia can improve inmate and reentry services, improve processes, and reduce the rate of incarceration in Philadelphia. I invite any interested stakeholders to join the working group. You can contact my office to sign up. So I look forward to building a network and engaging everyone involved in the working group in the upcoming weeks and months to find a collaborative solution to the overcrowdedness of our prisons and the crumbling infrastructure at the House of Corrections. Finally, anyone who has concerns about the construction or the need of a replacement prison. prison, I will arrange a tour for the 140-year-old House of Corrections, and I will guarantee, as most of you have already know, all right, I will guarantee you will have a different perspective once you have seen the conditions inside these walls. So thank you for the opportunity, Council President, in the process here today as we move forward on our last day, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank and applaud my colleague for reconsidering this bill and moving it back to committee for a wide range of discussion by members of council, all of whom I respect, all of whom I believe have good intentions. But the road to prison is paved with good intentions. And let me tell you about that road for a second. There are 11 neighborhoods, 12 zip codes, where the vast majority of the residents on State Road live. 11 neighborhoods in approximately 12 zip codes. And ironically and coincidentally, those are the same neighborhoods where underperforming schools are, performing low in math and in reading. I went to each and every one of those prisons. I've walked each and one of every one of those tours as chair of public safety. I have also been to places where they took a different path. I've been to Red Hook, New York, where they have a restorative justice model which has done a couple of worthwhile things. They've reduced their prison population and almost cut in half the cost of incarcerating an individual. I have also provided for my members and would hope that there would be a tour of that particular program in the consideration of a committee in a wider discussion. I would also suggest to you that we have on Wednesday, I had the honor of going to two graduations in 90-degree weather. That same day, they dismissed the entire student body for public education because of the heat, because of the lack of air conditioning. In my own alma mater, the fifth floor and the fourth floor are closed. There's no capital plan to do that. We closed 23 schools several years ago, and there are no projected plans to build new ones. So I would encourage humanity for the residents of the House of Corrections. I would insist upon it, but there are many ways to roam. There are many ways to accomplish that. And if the dialogue is sincere, I'll be the first to sign up, and if I'm wrong, I'm man enough to go along with it. But if I'm right, I would hope that we would consider that. And that is the best that this body does. It considers varying opinions about a subject, and we won't always agree, but we should always consider options. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Before proceeding with the votes, both on consent resolution and consent agenda with respects to bills and the regular calendar, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already signed, if you have not already done so, you can sign up to at the table to my left. You will be, your name will be called. You'll go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device, there's a light on that device. When the light turns green is your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. There is one caveat with respects to the three minutes that you will be given. In the event the rules of council allow us, or basically me, on the same subject matter, meaning that if there's a significant list of individuals testifying on the same bill resolution, i.e. subject matter, it is within the rules to allow the termination of that discussion during the course of that conversation. We would hope that we would not have to do that, but we do have a lot of business to conclude. There is a lot of individuals testifying on one of the bills. The bill that was just referenced for the record, and another bill that is also coming up for the record, that bill will not be heard today. That bill will be referred back to committee. It cannot be acted on until it's a committee vote, first and second reading, final passes, as the sponsor just indicated, that it is for the purpose of allowing a broader and further discussion with respects to the broader issue with respects to incarceration in the penal system. So I want to thank you very much for that. And Mr. Decker, please call the name, oh, by the way, you'll be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, can you please call the name of the first individual on the list?
Irma Lopez Salter, commenting on 150390.
Hello, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I want to talk about the Galvee Neighborhood Improvement District. I had talked to the district council person. I know there's a membership thing, and I'm asking to be on that committee as representing the Galvee vendors merchants. I believe that there's a fee there, depending on how much your business makes. Since we're not in business yet, I recommend that we pay a dollar a year. I'd like to talk about the computerized signs. I'd like to make sure that some of those signs are donated to the Philly neighborhood so this way all our tourists and our visitors know what's going on in the neighborhood if they might want to come out to visit. Now I want to take time out to thank City Council. Thank you very much for listening to me for the last three months. Thank you very much, Mark Maria, for being our voices, wait, let me sure, okay, for being our voices and to help us begin a new relationship with Priet. Make Priet hear us, hear our plight, and make them a believer. Thank you, Priet, for allowing us in your world while you understand our world. Together, we are going to make a better Philadelphia. Last for today, I look forward and cut that ribbon two, three years from now, and I want Mayor Kenny to be there, I want President Gerald Clark to be there, I want Mark to be there, and of course, Priet, and of course, myself. So I would like to be part of cutting that ribbon, and I look forward in seeing you in September, because the last thing is that I need your help to help us start an association for our merchants, but we'll talk to you about that. We'll work on it this summer. Thank you. God bless. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
See you in September.
Thank you for your testimony and your perseverance.
Adam Lang and Glenn Reed, commenting on 150409.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Adam Lang. I have lived in the Sharswood neighborhood for 10 years. I'm the current Republican Ward Leader. I've been on the board of the local civic association for several years. I was on the Reynolds Elementary School Advisory Council. I organized a financial literacy course at Robert Volk's High School. I say these not as points of credit, but to make clear, I am someone who has vested time and effort into the neighborhood as many other residents have done. So I keep asking myself, why does City Hall keep making my life harder and going out of its way to say it doesn't want me in Philadelphia? The bill before you today, which is the PHA eminent domain bill, will seize my property for the simple reason that you want it to give to someone else, as you would do to, as you would seize and do to many other people in the neighborhood. The claim is that the neighborhood is blighted and it needs help. That is true, but the claim ignores why the neighborhood has so much blighted property. Of the 1,300 properties, 500 are being transferred from the city itself. A couple of years ago, PHA auctioned off about 200 or so properties in Sharswood, which this bill is also seizing back. They were also blighted properties. That means over half of the properties on this list are blighted because of the City of Philadelphia and PHA. It's even worse when we take into consideration properties that have been tax delinquent for over a decade, and the city won't put up for auction. The city let them sit and fall apart. The single biggest factor to blight and lack of investment in Sharswood and much of North Philadelphia is our local government. Why does it make sense to take over a third of the land in a neighborhood and give it to people who have been the biggest cause of the problem? Many of you have been told it is because of market failures and no one wants the properties. I speak from experience that this isn't true, and the city does actively block acquisition. One of the reasons I bought where I did was that there was some vacant land next to the house. I figured I can try to get it so I can have gardens and an outdoor area after I bought the house. Not being originally from Philadelphia, I figured I could go to City Hall and kick off the process of acquiring. That was my first exposure to City Hall. The abridged version of the story is I had to spend two years hounding Councilman Clark's office until I publicly got him to agree to put a lot up for auction. Several months later, they go to auction, and the city's slitter bids against them at the request of the councilman's office. Fast forward to exactly three years ago today, this month, a vacant lot on my block is listed for sale with the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. I put in an expression of interest as instructed. No one gets back. You call the office, you get voicemails. About two months goes by before actually getting someone on the phone. Conversation ends after about 30 seconds when the person on the other line says they can't talk about selling you land unless you first have a letter of agreement from Councilman Clark's office. These aren't market failures.
Mr. Decker, conclude your, conclude your remarks.
This is a city demonstrating it can't handle property management itself, and what we need to focus on for Sharswood is actually letting private investment develop in the neighborhood, not a single agency trying to develop the whole land itself.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Glenn Reed, commenting on 150409.
Good afternoon, the City Council.
Good afternoon, sir.
The reason why I'm here today is because the majority of the citizens in Philadelphia, they don't know that the Philadelphia Housing Authority Police Department is stopping people on the street just as if they were the Philadelphia police. I was, I was told that they have the same rights as the Philadelphia police, and they can stop you for the same causes. But here's where the problem comes in, is because of the nature of police work, there's going to be some kind of conflicts, and there's going to be some kind of disagreements. And if you attempt to file a complaint with the Philadelphia Housing Authority, they have no procedure. There is no procedure for filing a complaint against the Philadelphia Housing Authority Police Department. Now, like in my case, where I tried to file a complaint, I hit a lot of brick walls, and I contacted the executive office of PHA, and I couldn't get two people at the Philadelphia Housing Authority to agree on what a procedure was to file a complaint. I was even told by the administrative assistant for the director that I should not be allowed to file a complaint against a Philadelphia Housing Authority police officer. And I know that's ridiculous. This is the city of Philadelphia, and this is the fifth-largest city in the most powerful country in the world. You can file a complaint against any police officer, or you should be able to. Anyway, to get to the point, because I've been complaining to my senator and to HUD about them not having a procedure, they have put a procedure in place temporarily until they come up with a procedure. And the procedure is to contact the Office of Audit and Compliance if you have a problem with a police officer. However, if you do contact the Office of Audit and Compliance and you file a complaint with them, they send you a letter, and I'd like to read this letter real fast. It's real short. Kindly allow this letter to serve as acknowledgement of the recent complaint that you filed with the Office of Audit and Compliance. After careful review of your allegations, this office will make a determination of whether to launch an investigation. If it is determined that the allegation does not warrant an investigation at this time, the information you have provided will be retained for possible future action. If an investigation is deemed necessary, please rest assured that the office will thoroughly investigate your claim and strive to do so within 180 days. Based on the findings of this investigation, a referral will be forwarded to the appropriate internal department or external agency to prompt a corrective action as necessary. Due to the confidential nature of this investigation, please be advised that the Office of Audit and Compliance will not be able to divulge any details on the progress or results of your investigation or your complaint. Thank you for your kind attention in this matter and for bringing this allegation to our light. And I would just ask City Council that if you're going to do business with PHA, and there's no way you cannot do business with PHA, could you please request that they put in place a open, a transparent, a fair way to file a complaint against a police officer if there's some sort of violation? And they should be held to the same standard as the Philadelphia Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, before you leave, can you do me a favor? Can you go to my office and leave your name and number? The City Council has a representative on the Philadelphia Housing Authority Board, so we can follow up with that issue to make sure we're down at 494 City Hall, right down the hall here. If you could just leave your name and number in the reference, and we'll have somebody follow up with a phone call.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Rick Spraden. Rick Spraden. Frank Urson, commenting on 150599.
Rick Spradlin.
Good, good afternoon, sir.
Morning, or good afternoon. Good afternoon, council members. I'm Rick Spradlin, Labor Relations Manager for Hyundai Rotem USA. Hyundai Rotem is a strong global competitor and passenger railcar manufacturer. We established our North American headquarters in Philadelphia in 2004. We chose Philadelphia for a number of reasons, one of them being the strength and experience of its manufacturing workforce, and another is the support of a qualified local supply base. In 2013, the state transportation bill was passed and signed into laws by Governor Corbin. This bill was crucial and necessary in order to support transportation projects across the state. It will have a tremendous positive impact on the city of Philadelphia, and more specifically, the riders of SEPTA. The bill will allow SEPTA to move forward with their plans for repairing their aging rail lines, as well as purchasing new vehicles for their aging fleet. It will create and sustain thousands of jobs. SEPTA utilizes both state and federal funding from the FTA for their capital programs. In years past, the use of federal funding did not allow for local labor hiring preferences. As Resolution 150559 points out, the U.S. Department of Transportation announced a pilot program allowing just that. Passing Resolution 150559 and SEPTA implementing local hiring goals for federally funded projects is key to maximizing the local job creation and local economic impact that SEPTA transportation projects creates. Hyundai Rotem graciously thanks the council, Mr. Clark, it's good seeing you again, and many of the other council members. Thank you for your support.
Thanks, sir, for your testimony.
Hello, City Council.
Good afternoon.
I'm Frank Urson. I'm the president of UTC, a small manufacturing business located right outside of the city. UTC manufactures, refurbishes, and assembles components for trains, primarily wheels, axles, and truck assemblies. We're very fortunate enough to be able to be on the SEPTA program, thanks to Hyundai Rotem. With localization, our company can continue to thrive. With localization, our company can continue to thrive. We started in 1983 with five people and because of acts like 150559, I believe we'll continue to thrive. We currently have 60 employees. And with this Steel Products Procurement Act and Buy America, and if we can get localization, small companies like UTC continue to grow. We must keep the work in America, not allow FTA waivers as SEPTA has recently applied for to buy wheels in China instead of local companies. With the help of City Council, we can continue to keep employees in Pennsylvania working. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Lisa Haver. And Diane Payne.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of council. My name is Lisa Haver. I'm a retired teacher and member of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, a grassroots organization of educators and parents. Our, our members have sent me here to support Council President Clark and council in their efforts to protect the professional jobs, including nurses, and to stop taxpayer money from being spent to decrease services to our students. The school district should not hand over control of these important jobs to outside companies who would not be accountable to the principal, would not be accountable to the parents, would not be accountable to the public. The school district would not be able to hire and fire these people and would not be able to ensure the quality of student services. Our students deserve the same level of quality in healthcare and all services as those students in neighboring suburban districts. Certified school nurses are there to serve the children and their families, period. They're not there to take children out of class or to bill for services. Certified school nurses in most emergency cases send students back to class. Certified school nurses are part of the school community. They know the children, they know their families, often they have seen brothers and sisters come through that school. The school district, you know, Superintendent Height has said this is, this is a matter of money. We can't afford certified school nurses or we want to supplement the certified school nurses. There are a lot of costs associated with not having a certified school nurse. Number one, you know, if, if it's a principal or a teacher or, or not, you know, somebody who's not a nurse cannot assess a child. And the calls to 911 have increased. That money is sometimes borne by the parents, sometimes by insurance company, but it's often borne by the city. Another cost is that, you know, principals who are already overburdened have to take care of sick children. And again, if they don't know what's wrong and they want to be safe, they're going to call the parents up to school. We have a lot of parents who do not have high-paying jobs, who have service jobs, who have retail jobs. These are jobs that if you're not there, you don't get paid. You know, thanks to Councilman Greenley and, and the other council members, a lot more people have sick pay, but they don't have personal day. When these parents are called unnecessarily, they lose money, they lose wages. So I want to thank you and to emphasize that the school district, and I say this as somebody who goes to every single SRC meeting and I see how the school district spends money, and I want to say unequivocally, the school district does have money for certified school nurses. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Diane Payne. Commenting on 150583.
Good afternoon. I'm a retired teacher, a member of the Working Educators Caucus, PFT, and Alliance of Philadelphia Public Schools. I would like to speak in support of not outsourcing our school district jobs, which I know you do not have direct control over. However, it is important for this body, which partially funds the school district budget, to be on board with school district goals. Dr. Height, with the support of the SRC, is on a mission to outsource jobs in closed schools. 32BJ has been before you to paint the picture of slow dismemberment of their union jobs, as has the PFT. Outsourcing is a whittling away at the quality of services offered our children, oftentimes whittling away at the very philosophy of what a quality education means. I'm sorry. And degrades the caliber of the workforce within the school district. Certified librarians were replaced by limas, and finally, they were just eliminated. They claim they have to outsource because they can't get quality substitute teachers, but many retired teachers are willing to sub and find it impossible to get on the list. Now nurses. The total sham of this proposal is stunning. Nurses support the health and the educational opportunities of our children. There is no way that outsourcing this crucial, crucial position will do anything more than make our children one more data point in someone's billable book. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Joe Cocho. Commenting on 150599.
Good morning, City Council, Joe Cocho. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. As I said, my name is Joe Cocho. I'm the current treasurer for the Transport Workers Union, Local 234, and I'm speaking on the bill presented, or the resolution by David O., that's 15099. And I'd like to start off by saying that I am also a Tacony Civic Association Treasurer and a member of the Citizens Crime Commission. But I come to you today on behalf of the Transport Workers Union President Willie Brown, the employees of Philadelphia-based Hyundai Rotem, and the residents of the city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The issue at hand here today is surely a no-brainer for almost everyone here in the room, but it should also be a no-brainer for every elected official in this state as well. Simply put, it's about jobs, practicality, morality, and huge economic growth for the city and the state, all rolled into one. Jobs have been a number one priority for every politician in the country, and most of you here have ran for election on a platform that surely included jobs. The resolution to be, to be brought today, brought to you today by Councilman O. is also about greatly expanding Pennsylvania and Philadelphia's manufacturing base and strengthening the state and the local economy. It should be that simple, right? But the fact that we are here today having a discussion on these very obvious issues, jobs and economic growth, is proof that some organizations such as SEPTA don't always agree with us about what's best for the city and state, only what's best for the organization. And no matter how much money they receive from the city, the counties, and the state, and the federal government, the fact that we should have to, to go to every politician in the state to do what's right and seemingly obvious, obvious shows that, in spite of SEPTA's slogan, we're getting there, shows they're not quite there yet. I faxed or emailed each of you here today a letter describing SEPTA's desire to purchase 100 to 150 desperately needed trolley cars to serve the residents of Philadelphia and Delaware County. The problem is, SEPTA wants to send this work to China. Yes, that's right, China. As if China needs the money more than the city of Philadelphia and the state of Pennsylvania. It's disturbing to me that we even need to have such a resolution in these economic times. Don't we need jobs here in Philly? Don't we need economic development here in the entire state? Philadelphia has its very own trolley car manufacturer right here in South Philly. And these trolley cars that will be serving our residents, paid for by our residents, driven and repaired by our residents, should be manufactured right here in Philadelphia's own railcar manufacturing plant, Hyundai Rotem. But here we are, asking for SEPTA to do the obvious. I have faith here in City Council. You already know what the right thing to do is. And I implore you to tell SEPTA and its powers to be to do the right thing and keep the work local. I have shown you all the numbers with my letter. Hyundai has provided solid, good-paying jobs at $17.75 an hour with benefits and a manufacturing plant capable of, of the largest train and trolley orders and has already provided beautiful new regional railcars running on the lines right now. Hyundai's plant has already generated $182,660,000 to 22 companies in the greater Philadelphia area. In closing, the real work is going to involve you, City Council, and all of us here to convince every other politician, your state reps, Governor Wolf, and Congress, to seize this opportunity before it's too late and Hyundai goes away like the once proud Bud Plant in Northeast Philadelphia. And the money goes away with it to a far-off land called China where they take our money, share no yen, and steal our data, and then pretend to be our friend. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next three individuals approach the podium. They'll speak in this order on 150498. Rob Mitchell. Rafael Deluna. Osborne Yu.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark and, and City Council. Thank you for allowing the mobile food vendors of Temple University the opportunity for their voices to be heard here today. The Philadelphia Mobile Food Association, of which I am the president, is always grateful for the strong working relationship we have built with the Council President's office and in working through all matters food-truck related, and we look forward to working out the details of proposed Bill 150498. The bill itself came as a surprise to the vendors of Temple University, and of even greater surprise was that council did not seek to involve the Philly Mobile Food Association from the beginning. Of the numerous proposals in the bill causing concern for the Philly Mobile Food Association, I'll begin with Section 1.3D, which addresses the vendor's responsibility of installing electrical poles, the amount of rights to the electrical supply business owners will possess throughout their tenure as vendors, and their rights to transfer that assignment moving forward. The second issue is in Section 1.3C, and that's the ambiguity of details regarding the Temple University District vending license. This is a license that has not previously existed but is now being introduced and bringing with it potentially, potentially additional fees, which will only add more expenses to an industry already burdened with bureaucratic costs. Third concern is found in Section 1.3G, the duration of hiatus time. We find it unreasonable and it should be dictated by the Temple University student's schedule as opposed to a single allocated month as defined within the proposal. A fourth and final concern, not written but communicated verbally, is the displacement issue and, and the uncertainty of its impact on each individual small business owner. Each of these entrepreneurs have built successful reputations in their current locations. Random displacement and the cost associated with it will cause each business essentially to start over by forcing them to rebuild their entire, entire client base based on their positioning on the campus. These are the sections of the bill with which the PMFA takes umbrage. That is not to say that there are not additional pieces of the proposed legislation that the Temple Mobile Food Operators themselves subject to. Ultimately, the Philly Mobile Food Association is here to defend its mission statement, advocating for legislation that is mobile food vendor-friendly and small business conducive. Bill 150498, as it is presented, is neither of these. In the spirit of encouraging and not thwarting small business growth, providing choices to consumers and not subjecting grassroots entrepreneurs to what could potentially be a nightmare of bureaucratic expenses and fees, the Philly MFA humbly requests a delay on the passage of Bill 150498 until details could be more clearly defined and so that an informed decision could be made that will have a direct impact on the roughly four dozen small business owners and the Philadelphians that they employ. Thank you.
Sir, one second, please. So can I ask you a question? I'm sorry I came back in. I may have missed you. What, to, up until this point, what has been the process with respects to the Temple University administration?
Council President, we are, we have been in contact with Temple University and are trying to have a sit-down with the powers that be there to work out the details. From what we understand, there has not been a Temple University District vending license. And it's the issue...
You're saying there has not been any meetings with, have, have there not been, you're saying there have not been any meetings with the administration?
With the Philly Mobile Food Association, there has not. The Temple vendors themselves have had. And as I'd mentioned in my, my, my statement earlier, the Philadelphia Mobile Food Association only became involved in the last couple of days because we weren't notified with, with the initial...
Okay.
With the, you know, the advent of the, the proposal.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm just trying to, because I'm, I mean, it was indicated to us that there had been conversations between the food truck drivers and the...
There have been. There have been conversations with some of the operators, but not with the association.
Not with the association. Okay. All right. We'll make sure that happens. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of City Council. Just to clarify for the record, there has been one meeting between the food truck owners and Temple University. So only one.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Rafael Deluna. I'm a small business owner and a mobile food entrepreneur. When I purchased my food truck in 2010, I invested my entire life savings into the opportunity to vend on Temple's campus. It took me another five years to save up enough money to make the needed repairs and modifications to the truck, and $100,000 later, I was finally open for business. I'm here to ask you today not to vote for this bill. If passed as written, this bill will ruin the livelihoods of the 40 other food truck owners sitting behind me and their families. In part, I understand why Temple University has decided to create a vending district, to create some order and hold food truckers to a higher standard, but we, food truck owners, also have the same goals and we hold each other to the highest operating and safety standards. This bill does more harm than good. For example, the section that states that vendors shall remain in continuous operation, vendors may close for a period of up to one month. How profitable would Rita's Water Ice be if they were forced to operate during the winter months? They wouldn't be in business very long. Our businesses are also seasonal. The reality is that our food trucks are typically profitable for only six months. If you know Temple University, then you know the campus is virtually a ghost town in December, January, part of May, June, July, and part of August. Another example of the unfairness of this bill is the section that states that all vendor spaces shall be non-assignable and non-transferable. This statement alone destroys the value of all our businesses. Would I have invested $100,000 for a food truck if it didn't come with a vending location? Absolutely not. Many of the food truckers behind me who have owned and operated their trucks for decades now won't be able to sell or transfer their businesses when they retire. I can't give it to my children. I can't give it to my brother or any other family member. Finally, the manner and process in which this bill was worked on by Temple University and, and the city was not transparent. Why would you not want to work with the food truck owners to help create a bill that works for all parties? We are here and we want to work with the university and the city. On April 4th, Temple News broke a story about this vending district, and this is what James Creedon, Vice President for Construction and Facilities and Operations, said. The vending district plans are not imminent. He added that the university has talked with the city about potential changes, but no action will be taken at any time in the near future. That was April 4th, and here we are today, moments away from destroying the lives of all these food truck owners. In closing, I would just like to say thank you for your time and I behoove you to reconsider this bill and not pass it as it currently is written. Thank you.
Osborne Yu.
Thank you, council members. My name is Osborne Yu and I share many of the, and I am a small business entrepreneur working at Temple University. I share many of the concerns of my fellow food truck owners in, first of all, the ability to communicate with Temple University in this matter. We have been trying to communicate them by private emails and by phone calls and have not been able to get in contact for the most part, which prevents our input into what directly affects our lives. Second, I'm... Second, many of us have purchased our food costs, food trucks at the location at a highly inflated price by preventing, by preventing the ability to sell and transfer our assignments. of the, by the other speakers. Thank you for your time, and I would also ask to prevent the, to delay the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
After Mr. Carrington, Ms. Carol Green. Mr. Carrington is commenting on 150533, 150445, and 150535.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Council members, all of City Council's distinguished guests, who are our citizens. I'm commenting once again further about three bills concerned in real estate taxes. First of all, I understand this bill that says the school district of Philadelphia shall be authorized to impose a tax on real estate, because as far as I understand it, the school district of Philadelphia is part of the city of Philadelphia, which is part of Philadelphia County, and it's all the same masses, the same land area, and we're already being taxed. So, and next thing I'd like to say something about is this bill about Homestead Act, where it states that if you under the Homestead Act and you've been accepted and you got that homestead exemption, if your certified deemed value of your property should be lower, then you will not have the ability to benefit from that. And as both a near-senior citizen and disabled citizen, my income is so limited and the projection for the future is so dubious that I think it would be almost illegal in a mall not to give me every benefit that I could possibly receive, well, me and everybody else who would be eligible for it. And, one more thing I'd like to say about taxes. We've tried to find tax money to give to the school district. Everyone keeps coming up with, all these groups and everyone saying they have found money that the school district has wasted, squandered, they sold resources, and then went to rent the same thing that they had sold, maybe not exactly the same building or that same resource, but then they go to get it from some private entity. Plus, we've also found that, well, we haven't found. I hope that, I'm repeating what I read in a statement that was issued by Councilman Olad last week, that there was $105 million found in budget savings from the city budget. And if the school was asking for $105 million, 105 is 105. And I want to thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carol Green. Commenting on 150439.
Excuse me, thank you, excuse me, I'm sorry, forgive me if I offended anyone. I hope I haven't offended anyone. If you see my face, if I've ever offended you, please forgive me for anything that I've done wrong to you. Thank you. I thank God for the words that I heard today from the scripture. It helped me, but I do need you to pray for me, because I can't say this unless God helps me to say it, please. Thank you. I want a business, and I know that God loves homosexuals, and I know he loves lesbians, but I can't bake a cake for a lesbian or homosexual's wedding, because homosexuality and lesbianism is a sin. And even though God loves these people, and he does give them gifts, and he gives everyone gifts, because, you know, he loves, he loves us, he loves to share his gifts, but I'm unhappy because it's not that I don't love these people, but I can't disobey the law of God. You know, we have to obey God's law and not man's law. And man says it's all right, some people say it's all right for a lesbian and a homosexual to be married, for a gay to be married, but it's not. And I just don't want, I want to have a business, but I can't bake a cake for the homosexuals and the lesbians, and I, I, we have to do God's way, you know, we have to obey God and not man. So, thank you for listening, and I just hope everyone here is doing well, and if I offended anyone, I said anything wrong, forgive me. You can read about that in Leviticus Chapter 18, verse 22, and maybe Leviticus Chapter 20. And, you know, we have all sinned, and we've come short of the glory of God. So, I go to church all the time, I'm always repenting, asking God to forgive me for my sins, because I'm a sinful woman. Without, without God, I'm just, I can't do anything. And so, you know, we all have to confess our sins and give them up with the help of God. So, you know, like I said, forgive me if I said anything wrong, but we have to do what's right. We have to do it God's way. Our thoughts are not God's thoughts, and our ways are not God's ways. Remember also Deuteronomy, the 28th chapter. God does love us, he does care about us, and he understands us. God bless you all. Thank you, God.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
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 Thank you, ma'am.
speaking out in opposition of this bill in reference to taking the funds and transferring it to education, which leads us, leads us to the question, if we can find money for the prison, where is this dilemma with the education? So I'm gonna continue to say it, I'm gonna continue to come back, because I've had discussions with particular individuals on your council that have said some powerful things to me that made me feel that I should be one of the individuals to take action for those that can't speak. Our education is important, these children's education, the future of the city rests in that, so that these individuals can be productive. So, take a minute to look at today's article on that contaminated land, and then maybe we won't hear about this bill again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
I'm a co-founder and executive director of Exoffenders for Community Empowerment, and we are opposed to the city buying this land for the prison. We do, we are not opposing the city to buy the land, but we do oppose them buying the land specifically for the prison. And I'd like to just say that Councilman Bobby Aaron, I'd like to thank you for considering and thinking about this particular legislation, and have put together this work group that you want to put together, and I'd like to be on that working group, so that we can come up with some good policies to, to reduce mass incarceration within our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Okay. Mr. Decker, we want to now be moving to our agenda, our resolution consent agenda. I'd ask Mr. Decker, please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such objection, without debate, the resolution will immediately be removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the resolutions on the consent agenda now.
Resolution Number 150575, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 6th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you.
And Resolution Number 150576, entitled a resolution approving the annual program statement and budget for the expenditure of the neighborhood transformation initiative bond proceeds for fiscal year 2016. And Resolution Number 150577, entitled a resolution approving the agreement of sale of the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area to convey certain portions of property identified by its number and street address as 1600 through 36 North Broad Street. And Resolution Number 150578, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 28th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150579, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 20th and 28th wards of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150580, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 5th, 28th, and 32nd wards of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150582, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150583, entitled a resolution authorizing the council of the City of Philadelphia to work with the Pennsylvania Auditor General to comprehensively assess the financial and operational health of the school district of Philadelphia by the fall of 2015, and to use such findings to develop a funding approach for the FY17 budget, and that proposes sustainable solutions to the school district's ongoing structural deficit. And Resolution Number 150584, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 7th, 18th, 19th, 23rd, and 23rd, and 33rd wards of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150582, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 37th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150586, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 18th and 19th wards of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150593, entitled a resolution calling upon the governor and the mayor to jointly issue an executive order establishing an intergovernmental fiscal oversight entity for the school district of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 150598, entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 39th Ward of the City of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded, each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. And I'd ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bills on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, those bills will be taken off the consent agenda and will immediately be placed on the regular final passage calendar today. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 130656AA, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by further providing for revised sign controls and amending Chapter 9, 600, entitled service and other businesses by adjusting the licensing fees for commercial outdoor advertising signs. And amending Chapter 19, 3400, entitled excise tax on outdoor advertising transactions by adjusting the excise tax on outdoor advertising signs. And Bill Number 140607A, entitled an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled finance taxes and collections, Chapter 1600, entitled water and sewer rents by providing for installment payment agreements. And Bill Number 150466A, entitled an ordinance authorizing the director of housing on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a community development block grant to participate in the home investment partnership program and the emergency solutions grant program, and for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant. And Bill Number 150500A, entitled and ordinance amending Section 3, 207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled sale of fuel oil by modifying certain requirements for the, for commercial fuel oil content. And Bill Number 140895, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Tacony Street, Bridge Street, Frankfurt Creek, Delaware River, and Walbach Street. And Bill Number 150376, entitled and ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating certain subsurface portions of Market Street, east of 9th Street, 10th Street, between Market Street and Filbert Street, and 11th Street, between Market Street and Filbert Street. And Bill Number 150377, entitled an ordinance authorizing the construction, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments into the right-of-way of Market Street, Filbert Street, 11th Street, 10th Street, 9th Street, and 8th Street. And Bill Number 150378, entitled an ordinance approving the ninth amended amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the Market Street East Urban Neural Area, including the Second Amendment to the Urban Neural Plan, which provides for the rehabilitation of the gallery at Market East as a first-class mixed-use retail center. And Bill Number 150379, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14, 502 of the Philadelphia Code entitled CTR, Center City Overlay, by adding a new subsection entitled Market Street East Retail Area relating to accessory signs. And Bill Number 150215, entitled and ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, Norah Street, Frankfurt Avenue, and Oxford Street. And Bill Number 150232, entitled an ordinance to amend the institutional development district master plan of the University of Pennsylvania by allowing for the complete renovation of the Mellon Building located at 3457 through 59 Walnut Street. And Bill Number 150236, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Terrace Street, Sherrys Lane, Crescent Street, Rector Street, Silverwood Street, and Grape Street. And Bill Number 150284, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Tulip Street, Tucker Street, Memphis Street, and Albert Street. And Bill Number 150285, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14, 517 of the Philadelphia Code entitled UED, Urban Experiential Display Overlay Control District, to provide for further regulations regarding urban experiential displays. And Bill Number 150288, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Mifflin Street, 8th Street, Deadly Street, and 9th Street. And Bill Number 150289, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, Amber Street, Haggard Street, Frankfurt Avenue, York Street, Aramingo Avenue, Cumberland Street Extended, the Delaware River, Shakamaxon Street Extended, Delaware Avenue, Frankfurt Avenue, and Laurel Street. And Bill Number 150350, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Dauphin Street, Watch Street, and Susquehanna Avenue. And Bill Number 150351, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Thompson Street, Fort Street, Girard Avenue, and Lawrence Street. And Bill Number 150473, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Green Street, Second Street, Spring Garden Street, and Third Street. And Bill Number 150487, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Newtown Avenue, Godfrey Avenue, Allen Grove Street, Tabor Avenue, Falk Ridge Street, and Adams Avenue. And Bill Number 150488, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Distant Street, Whittaker Avenue, Brighton Street, Penway Street, St. Vincent Street, and Algon Avenue. And Bill Number 150489, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Hagges Mill Road, Port Royal Avenue, Lair Street, Summit Avenue, Eva Street, Shawman Avenue, Umbria Street, Railroad Right-of-Way, and the County Line. And Bill Number 150490, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Hunting Park Avenue, Pacific Streets, 22nd Street, Benango Street, and Wissahigan Avenue. And Bill Number 150491, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Priscilla Street, West Colter Street, Midvale Avenue, Wissahigan Avenue, and West Queen Lane to Priscilla Street. And Bill Number 150492, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by amending Chapter 14, 800, entitled parking and loading by amending Section 14, 806, entitled off-street loading by providing certain exceptions to the maximum curb cut width. And Bill Number 150494, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Arizona Street, Emerald Street, York Street, and Coral Street. And Bill Number 150442, entitled and ordinance approving the fiscal year 2016 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works. And Bill Number 150443, entitled and ordinance authorizing the extension of the program under which advanced approval is given to the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation to enter into certain contracts and transactions arising thereunder for the purchase, storage, distribution, transportation, and/or transmission of natural and other gas supply on behalf of the Philadelphia Gas Works. And Bill Number 150445, entitled and ordinance amending Chapter 19, 3900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled tax exemptions for longtime owner occupants of residential properties by clarifying that once the deemed certified market value is set for purposes of the longtime owner occupants program, it shall remain at that value regardless of whether the property is subsequently assessed at a certified market value that is higher or lower than the certified market value that was originally used to calculate the deemed certified market value. And Bill Number 150469, entitled and ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, all are part of a parcel of land bounded by West Westmoreland Street, North Hope Street, West Ontario Street, and North Front Street for further conveyance. And Bill Number 150501, entitled and ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Property to acquire Anne Eastman in the area bounded by Market Street, 11th Street, Chestnut Street, and 12th Street. And Bill Number 150512, entitled and ordinance authorizing the Commerce Director and the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire an approximately 27-acre property known as International Plaza located on Route 291 in Tinnicum Island Road, Tinnicum Township, Delaware County, together with all improvements there on, and to enter into a master lease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development pursuant to which the city will lease the property to Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development. And Bill Number 150213, entitled and ordinance amending Chapter 12, 3000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled use of an automated red light enforcement system to prevent red light violations by authorizing the installation of red light enforcement systems at the intersection of 26th Street and Penrose Avenue. And Bill Number 150267, entitled and ordinance amending Section 9, 203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled street vendors by permitting street vending on the 5500 block of North 13th Street. And Bill Number 150405, entitled and ordinance amending Section 9, 213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled farmers markets by adding to the permissible locations. And Bill Number 150410, entitled and ordinance establishing a no-parking regulation on the south side of Calahill Street from Second Street, 995 off-ramp, to just past the bus parkway driveway at 114 Calahill Street. And Bill Number 150411, entitled and ordinance establishing a two-way regulation on Calahill Street from Second Street to Columbus Boulevard. And Bill Number 150412, entitled and ordinance establishing a two-way regulation on Spruce Street from Front Street to Columbus Boulevard. And Bill Number 150413, entitled and ordinance authorizing Michael Betancourt for Ion Partners to construct, own, and maintain structural encroachments at 1 South Broad Street. And Bill Number 150414, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-parking regulation on the south side of Spruce Street from Columbus Boulevard West for approximately 50 feet. And Bill Number 150439, entitled and ordinance amending Section 9, 206 of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk vendors in neighborhood business districts by creating the Woodland Avenue Business District for sidewalk vending. And Bill Number 150444, entitled and ordinance authorizing the installation of all waste stop signs at the intersection of Norcom Road and Nature Road. And Bill Number 150467, entitled and ordinance authorizing Roland Cassis to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 816 North Fourth Street. And Bill Number 150468, entitled and ordinance amending Section 9, 213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled farmers markets by adding as a permissible location the north side of West Tabor Road from North Park Avenue to North 13th Street. And Bill Number 150474, entitled and ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled streets by adding a new section establishing requirements for block parties and non-block party events. And Bill Number 150496, entitled and ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 58 by striking from the city plan and vacating Mellon Street from Park Avenue to Ridge Avenue. And Bill Number 150498, entitled and ordinance amending Section 9, 206 of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk vendors in neighborhood business districts by creating the Temple University District. And Bill Number 150503, entitled and ordinance amending Section 9, 213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Rock Markets by amending and further clarifying the definitions section. And Bill Number 150504, entitled and ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 238 by striking from the city plan and vacating the southerly two-feet-wide portion of Washington Avenue from Front Street to Walter Street. And Bill Number 150506, entitled and ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Parking Authority to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments within the public right-of-way on Arch Street, Filbert Street, and 8th Street. And Bill Number 150513, entitled and ordinance authorizing John Duffy to construct, own, and maintain a bay-window encroachment at 215 South Bonn Saul Street. And Bill Number 150514, entitled and ordinance authorizing the installation of all waste stop signs at the intersection of Eva Street and Port Royal Avenue. And Bill Number 150515, entitled and ordinance authorizing Jason Cohen to construct, own, and maintain a banner pole encroachment at 4165 Ridge Avenue. And Bill Number 150516, entitled and ordinance authorizing Richard Barnhart to construct, own, and maintain a banner pole encroachment at 4341 Ridge Avenue. And Bill Number 150472, entitled and ordinance amending Section 19, no, excuse me, Section 9, 1306 of the Philadelphia Code entitled special inspection agencies and special inspectors to further provide for the registration of special inspection agencies and special inspectors, qualifications for such registrations, and duties of such agencies and inspectors. And Bill Number 150052, entitled and ordinance naming and designated the City of Philadelphia Own Playground on the 200 block of East Indiana Avenue located, located on the corner of A Street and East Indiana Avenue as Hope Park. And Bill Number 150465, entitled and ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner to enter into a license agreement with the Zoological Society of Philadelphia to continue licensing to the Zoological Society certain land and improvements known as the 38th Street Lot, Zoological Drive, and the Sedgely Drive parking area, all under certain terms and conditions.
Hey. It's a mouthful, Mr. Decker. These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Brien.
Aye on all bills except Bill 150409, I'd like to report in the negative.
Move that, Mr. Decker.
Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla.
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark.
Yeah, whoa. For the record, Councilman O'Brien, we take, we took 150409 off the consent agenda, so it will be coming up under the regular session. You're welcome, sir. We now consider the bills and resolutions. Oh. Okay. There appears to be some question as to whether or not we took a vote on the consent agenda, All right. It's a long day. All right. Took the vote. Majority of the members haven't voted in affirmative for each of the bills on the consent agenda. The bills on the consent agenda are passed. We now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, I would like to ask you to read the title, Bill Number...
And ordinance amending Chapter 9, 3900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled property licenses and owner accountability. Chapter 14, 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled juice regulations. And Chapter 19, 2400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled hotel room rental tax to facilitate short-term rentals of accommodations to clarify the imposition of collection of hotel tax on the same, and to make technical and clarifying changes.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasco. Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of 15, and ayes of zero. Majority of the members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, call the title of 150406.
And ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to purchase from 7777 Philadelphia PA Loan Associates a certain tract of land together with the improvements there on, commonly known as 7777R State Road.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill Number 150406 be removed from the calendar and recommitted to the Committee of Public Property and Public Works.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded, that Bill Number 150406 be recommitted to committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 150406 is being recommitted to committee. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 150375?
And ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property, the director of commerce, and other officials of the city to execute or approve various agreements and other matters by and among the city, the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, and others relating to the redevelopment operation and maintenance of properties located on the north side of Market Street between 8th and 11th Streets in the city, and commonly known as the Gallery Mall.
This bill happened to be read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150375. Did that all right? I'm sorry. A lot of people coming up. Sorry, Mr. Decker. I did that. 150380.
An ordinance creating the gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District, being the area generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, Eighth Street on the east, Eleventh Street on the west, and Market Street on the south, including certain improvements located thereon, and approving the project plan of the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the redevelopment of the gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150093.
An ordinance amending chapter 18200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Airports by requiring providers of ground handling services at city airport facilities to obtain a permit from the city before providing ground handling services and providing for possible permit revocation.
This bill has been heard on two separate... Sorry, it's a little bit confusing today, mostly on my behalf. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
President, I move for that Bill 150093 be remanded to our suspension calendar.
It's been moved and properly seconded that Bill Number 150093 be placed on suspension calendar. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 150, at the request of the sponsor, 093 is moved to the suspension calendar. We will go a little out of order. Let's just get right to it. Mr. Decker, 150162.
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2016 through 2021 inclusive.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker.
An ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2016 capital budget.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150164.
An ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2016.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 14 and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150165.
An ordinance amending section 191801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a taxes, a tax on real estate within the City of Philadelphia.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark. The ayes are 10.
And ayes are 5.
The ayes are 5.
Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150167.
An ordinance amending chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Good. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15. Ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes.
Bill Number 150531 entitled An Ordnance authorizing the Director of Commerce to enter into use and lease agreements between the city and each of the airlines servicing Philadelphia International Airport.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150533.
An ordinance amending chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by establishing a tax rate for city real estate tax.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien.
No.
Councilman O'Neil.
No.
Councilman O.
No.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 10 and ayes are 5. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150534.
An ordinance amending chapter 191200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Tax by establishing a rate of taxation on parking transactions for fiscal year 2016 and thereafter.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
No.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 11 and ayes are 4. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150535.
An ordinance amending section 191806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia and to set the rate for such tax.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil.
No.
Councilman O.
No.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 11 and ayes are 4. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150409.
An ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Housing Authority to acquire by condemnation fee simple titled of certain properties located in the vicinity of 19th Street to the east, 28th Street to the west, Cecil B. Moore Avenue to the north, and College Avenue to the south.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 14 and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150265.
An ordinance amending chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by authorizing the benefit, for the benefit of the School District of Philadelphia, the assignment or transfer of real estate tax liens on commercial property, either absolutely or as collateral security, for an amount to be determined by the department.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones. Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Councilwoman...
I voted no.
No. I thought I heard you. I'm sorry, misheard you. Let the record reflect that the ayes are 14 and ayes are 1. Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez voting nay. Mr. Decker, let's try 150507. This requires a 2/3 vote.
An ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the Sinking Fund Commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with the issuance of the bonds and certain other actions, and fixing a day and providing for arrangements for holding the election for obtaining the consent of the electors.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150508.
An ordinance authorizing the approving, and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision of, relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of development assistance to support certain costs related to promoting economic and commercial development of the city.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fifteen and the ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150509.
An ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer to enter into an amendment agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for provision of payroll banking services to the city.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. Councilwoman Bass, did you need to be recognized? Oh, sorry. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O. Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fourteen and the ayes are one. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150510.
An ordinance constituting the Fourteenth Supplemental Ordinance, the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor or a majority of them to issue and sell one or more series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue refunding bonds of the city of Philadelphia.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen. Councilman O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fifteen and the ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to resolutions. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150599.
A resolution recommending the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority to implement local hiring goals for contract opportunities for federally funded transportation projects by taking advantage of the U.S. Department of Transportation's Local Labor Hiring Pilot Program introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150599. Is that Squilla's? Which one is which? Three oh? Is it three oh? So it's three oh? Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150390.
A resolution approving that certain amended and restated and lease and redevelopment agreement between the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and PR Gallery One Limited Partnership for eight thirty-three Market Street, nine oh one Market Street, and nine oh five Market Street, and that certain amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreement between the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and Keystone Philadelphia Properties for one thousand one through nineteen Market Street, and that certain amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreement between the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and Keystone Philadelphia Properties for ten twenty-five Market Street for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Market Street East urban renewal area.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, that resolution is adopted, 150390. Thank you. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and celebrating the crew of the USS Dace on their reunion weekend of September, of September eleventh through thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution showing support for the City of Philadelphia Flood Risk Management Task Force by offering engaged partnership and thoughtful consideration of forthcoming recommendations introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the outstanding hard work and dedication of Jesse Bermudez to Philadelphia's Latin music scene and declaring July eighth, two thousand fifteen, as Jesse Bermudez Day, introduced by Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Hector Mesa Nave for his dedication to the Latino and salsa communities in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and declaring July sixth through the twelfth, two thousand fifteen, as siempre, Salsa Philly Week, introduced by Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Education and Law and Government to conduct public hearings to examine the low voter turnout in primary and general elections in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and commemorating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when slaves were freed in the United States of America more than one hundred and fifty years ago and further, celebrating National Juneteenth Independence Day, which is also known as Freedom Day on Friday, June nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Glenn Bergman for his outstanding and memorable eleven years of service as the general manager of the Weaver's Way Food Co-op, and congratulating him on his new position as Executive Director of Philabundance, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to investigate and hold hearings on the preservation and expansion of the city's public art, including its voluminous collection of outdoor murals and sculptures, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and commemorating August twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, as Women's Equality Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and commemorating August twenty-one, two thousand fifteen, as National Senior Citizens Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Michael Pasquale Esquire for his dedication to helping members of the armed forces and veterans with service-connected disability claims, introduced by Councilman O.
Councilman Heenan, did you need to be recognized? Oh, okay, sorry. Never mind. Uh, was it, there was move for the adoption?
Yes, I do.
It was, and I'm assuming it was seconded. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing September two thousand, September eleventh, two thousand fifteen, as Patriot Day in Philadelphia, to remember and reflect on the tragedy and heroism resulting from the September eleventh, two thousand one terrorist attacks on the United States, introduced by Councilman O.
Councilman O.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling upon all Philadelphians to recognize the prominent history of the American flag and celebrate the importance of the flag of the United States by flying ten thousand American flags throughout the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling upon all Philadelphians to appreciate and enthusiastically participate in Restaurant Week in Center City, Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution respectfully requesting Congress to award a Congressional Gold Medal collectively to the Filipino veterans of World War II in recognition of their dedicated service to the United States from July twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-one, to December thirty-one, nineteen forty-six, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the.
Councilman Heenan, did you need to be? You were teeing up for? Okay, thank you.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our calendar for today. And I would like to ask, are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Council President, I wanted to thank all the members of council for supporting the resolution regarding the pilot program of the Department of Transportation whereby federal dollars, which are coming to Philadelphia as a result of the need to improve transportation infrastructure, can be used to, uh, bring programs that provide local hiring. It was a few years ago that we visited the Hyundai Rotem facility, and there we found three hundred fifty jobs, but what a lot of people may not know that is approximately, and we don't know exactly how many, but approximately twenty percent of that workforce are ex-offenders or returning citizens. They were given the opportunity to apply for the job, they were trained, they were certified in a highly paid, highly desirable skill, which is high-tech welding. In addition, five thousand workers are supported by the contracts that were being worked on in and around Philadelphia. That's about a hundred eighty million dollars, I believe, that was brought into the local economy, and there are many other benefits to the fact that Hyundai Rotem came to Philadelphia, including the fact that ships, planes, trains, and trucks all have to be U.S. companies that move, um, all the parts. The taxes we receive, but I think as equally important is Philadelphia is now a high-tech train manufacturer, and I raise this because certainly, you know, SEPTA is one of the best-run transportation companies, we know that here in the United States, and I certainly encourage SEPTA to build their trains in Philadelphia, build their trains in Pennsylvania, but as a councilman, build those trains in Philadelphia. Unless there's some really important reason why they cannot be or should not be built in Philadelphia, I'm sure everyone here is gonna really wanna see that those trains are built in Philadelphia. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And speeches on behalf of the majority, and the chair recognizes. Councilman Heenan, I think you were teed up. Yeah.
Thank you, Council President, and I'll be brief. Today, as many of you know, especially reading the paper, you know, one of our colleagues is gonna be leaving us, and it's our last day. You know, Ed Nielsen has been a friend of mine for about thirty years, and he unfortunately didn't make it through the primary in the wonderful world of Philadelphia politics, all right, but his exemplary job as city councilperson is yet to be matched. I've seen him sit with constituents when he was a state representative, and as a city council, his preparedness is definitely gonna make us proud, all right, because we need to continue to have fighters in Harrisburg, and, you know, although he won't be here, he's not going far, so I wanna wish Ed Nielsen, you know, my friend and our colleague, all the best wishes and good luck in Harrisburg, because we need you up there fighting for us here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I join Councilman Bobby Heenan in extending our very, very best to Eddie Nielsen. We traveled across this entire city to all sixty-nine wards together, and I'm hopeful that Harrisburg will see the benefit of his goodwill and care for our city. I also want to speak not for Councilwoman Blackwell or Councilwoman Sanchez, but certainly to underscore how much we appreciated the successful passage of our ballot measures. We want to thank all of those who made a difference and helped to make the Commission for Women a permanent function of city government. On Election Day, question number two, to establish the Commission for Women passed with seventy-six percent of the vote. So a huge thank you to Mayor Nutter, councilman colleagues, ward leaders, community leaders, members of the media, and citizens, men, women alike, who called my office asking how they could help to make the commission a reality. Because of this new measure, women and girls will finally have a permanent seat and a steady voice at the table. Know that I look forward to watching this commission get off the ground in January twenty sixteen as it grows into a powerful thought leader on behalf of women and girls in every corner of the city. Then secondly, and finally, as we come to what I believe to be a productive legislative session, and as we recess for the summer, I must offer a combination, a commercial, and congratulations to the team at the Dell Music Center. Congratulations to Commissioner Susan Slosson and her Deputy Commissioner Cynthia Douglas, and to Mayor Nutter for putting together a summer lineup that I would call, quite frankly, amazing. We have Patty LaBelle, Heatwave, the Shy Lights, the Black Pearl Chamber Orchestra led by one African-American woman in the country who leads a chamber orchestra, Toni Braxton, Babyface, Fantasia, Johnny Gill, Erykah Badu, Stephanie Mills, Cheryl Lee Ralph will be bringing twenty-five years of divas singing at the Dell East, and my favorite, Philidanco. bringing 25 years of divas singing at the Dell East, and my favorite, Philidanco. Susan Slosson and Cynthia Douglas, the dynamic duo, has transformed the Robin Hood Dell into a world-class concert and entertainment venue. Kudos to all who worked to make sure that the talented performers come to the city, but more importantly, to those councilmembers who pooled their dollars during our last session for the upgrade at the Dell. As we move forward, I want to go on record and state the following. We must do everything possible to ensure that the Dell Music Center continues to be operated by the city of Philadelphia. Now that it is beginning to experience success, there are whispers of those who want to buy the Dell. We have to make sure that everything possible is done to ensure that the Dell Music Center remains operated by the city of Philadelphia, and that those experiences that we have there continue to happen right there at the Dell Music Center in the district shared by you and Councilman Jones. Thank you, Mr. President, I'll see you at the Dell.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Dr. King once said, "What affects one directly affects all indirectly." And, you know, as I serve as a public servant, I recognize that we are in a crossroads in this great country of America, rather than protests taking place regarding law enforcement in cities such as Baltimore, or Ferguson, or New York, or the manhandling of young African-American women by law enforcement officials, to the most recent tragedy last evening of the murdering of nine individuals who are serving their guy in their house of worship, an elected official being amongst one of the victims, Senator Pickney from Charleston, South Carolina, just reminds me of the history books that I've read while attending school. And so hopefully as a country, people from all different backgrounds, African-American, Caucasian, Asian alike, will begin to continue focusing on the number-one issue of tolerance, and us looking out for one another, because it's definitely, at least for me, particularly being a public servant, a sad day in America. And it often reminds me that this work that we do is a serious job, because part of whatever the reasonings were, it was definitely listed as a hate crime, but also they were talking about how this was an elected official aggressively advocating for body cameras for law enforcement officials, and rather someone agreed or disagreed with him decides to react on their own political opinions, but nevertheless, you have nine people murdered senselessly. So I always go on record saying black lives matter, all lives matter, but for me, being a public servant, and serving in this great city, living in this country, I do recognize that we all have to come together in order to move this country forward. You know, I got a son that's growing up, and again, I'm from the streets of South Philadelphia, seeing all aspects of life, but think about my young man growing up in this world, what he's faced against, and so just wanna send my hearts and prayers out to the families in Charleston, South Carolina, and also blessings to the family of another public servant, Senator Clemente Pickney, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and our hearts go out to all of those also. Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
I was gonna say, Mr. President, I thought you were waiting for me for last, where you kept skipping over me.
You know what, we're gonna resend that.
All right, no, no, no.
You're gonna go last, sir.
I wrote a couple words, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, we're skipping right over you, sir, we're gonna come back, we're gonna come back to you.
He isn't here no more, he left before me.
We're gonna come back to you last, sir.
No, no, I just got a couple words.
Councilman, we're concerned that you may get up and leave.
I wanna share a few remarks with you, Mr. President.
Councilman, respectfully-
For the record.
We would like to do you last because of your esteem-
Oh, no, they gotta stay now, I got them now, they're here.
Man, we need to keep you here for the key. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
We know it won't be just a few words, Mr. President, when he speaks. First, I would like to join in with the other members in wishing Councilman Nielsen best wishes and good luck in the future. I just wanna make two very quick announcements. If we ever do finish here, there is a briefing across the hall by Philadelphia Fight as they talk about their continuing efforts to combat HIV, and talking about a groundbreaking program that I think will be very interesting to people. And next Tuesday, despite what some people say, we're not all running away out of here, next Tuesday, Councilman Heenan and I, together with Women Against Abuse, will be holding what we call a city council staff training on dealing with the issues of intimate partner violence. It will start at 10 o'clock in the caucus room, and at the end, there will be lunch, and by the way, there is lunch across the hallway too. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome.
To all those out there recognizing the holy month of Ramadan, we give out the greetings on behalf of city council. I wanted to recap just quickly and thank you for your leadership. A lot of good work was done in this session, whether you wake up and listen to the President's State of the Union address as they recognize paid sick leave, I almost fell out my chair when I saw it, and I said, "That's Councilman Greenlee's legislation." Or whether you look at the work that Councilwoman Blackwell did to make sure that nonprofits didn't get taxed this year, or whether you look at the work that was elevated the wages of over 2,000 workers at the airport that Councilwoman and Councilman Wilson Good led the charge for. We did a lot of good work that has come to fruition by way of Be Sure Before You Open the Door. We held hearings on that, and now it is a operating program protecting our seniors. So you on workforce housing, pulling together that kind of thing and public policy to make sure that there remains a middle class in the city of Philadelphia. I just wanted to underscore that, to say that sometimes we argue, but we get back together, and we produce for the city of Philadelphia, great public policy work, even if sometimes we don't get credit for it. I wanna underscore and make sure that the folks know that we are out there working for them, and I wanna thank you for your leadership, Council President.
Thank you, sir, it's been my pleasure. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank all the councils for the unanimous support today of the gallery TIF legislation during today's session. This is a great day for the city of Philadelphia, it allows Preet and Maysurich to redevelop the gallery property, it'll activate East Market Street to connect Center City with our historic district. I would like to invite everybody, all members of council and the vendors, if they're still here, to join the mayor at 3:00 PM today in the mayor's reception room to sign the gallery TIF bill to really kick off this great day here in council. I would also like to remind councilmembers and their staff to join me at the Spruce Harbor Park from 5:00 to 7:00 today, rain or shine, unfortunately, but we'd like to celebrate the council session and also Councilman Nielsen's last day, so he deserves all the celebration that we could do, we appreciate working with him, and honored to have done that, and look forward to working with him at the state, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer my gratitude and admiration to Councilman Eddie Nielsen for doing something that I don't think I would ever consider doing, and that is returning to Harrisburg to serve the good people of Philadelphia in the General Assembly. Having said that, Eddie and I have been friends, as everybody knows, for almost time out of mind. As the representative in the 169th Legislative District, I had the good fortune of working with Eddie as he, in Local 98, supported our youth organizations and community groups and church groups, and then he succeeded me in the 169th. And then, it took me 35-some years to get here, and he did it in the snap of a finger. But I would also like to congratulate Councilman Nielsen for his advocacy for those individuals who learn differently, those who have ADHD, dyslexia, and language processing issues, and as we embark on this work group to study the issues of prisons and education, I think it's important to recognize Councilman Nielsen's work in this field, because they're the kids that walk so many steps behind others, and that are targeted by individuals that are older than them, and they feel bad about themselves. And there's an old adage, that if I feel like a piece of crap and somebody tells me I'm a piece of crap, then I'm a piece of crap. I admire Councilman Edward Nielsen for advocating for these individuals who our educational system never responds to, and I know that they'll welcome him in Harrisburg to continue that advocacy and the good work that he started before he came here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kieron Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna echo what Councilman Jones was saying about good legislation. I know that voting for taxes for a fifth year in a role for schools could be difficult for some of my colleagues. Some of us are unapologetic about our support for children and the schools. I wanna thank you and recognize your resolution to create an oversight board and how important it is, in addition to the resolution I did to work with the auditor general on this audit of the school district. We are a responsibility and an obligation to demonstrate to folks that the school district is making the tough decisions in streamlining its budget while it's attempting to educate our folks. All eyes should be on Harrisburg now. We have to put the pressure. Rumor is that there will be a bad budget that is passed, that Wolf will veto it, and that they will have a long summer. So I think that those of us who pay attention to this need to stay steadfast on that and make sure that our advocates and everyone is in Harrisburg, and let's begin the conversation in the fall, because next year, we will be back here again talking about school funding, and let's make sure that whatever decisions we make next year, folks feel like we are being transparent and we're giving them the answers to the questions that they have. And so Nielsen will get a pass this summer, I guess, but I do wanna congratulate him and hope that he can go to Harrisburg, understanding in his experience here in council how very hard and difficult it is for local government to do the heavy lifting that the state is unwilling to do in meeting its constitutional obligation to public school education. But on the issue of good policy today, with the help and the support of all my colleagues, we did step one of what would be creating a water, affordable water rate in the city of Philadelphia. And I look forward to working with my colleagues, the advocates, and others in the Water Department in doing this. I really believe, to complement the work that you've done around neighborhoods of choice, if we want to continue our 58%, 60% homeownership rate, we have a responsibility to protect homeowners and keeping people in their homes. And so whether it's the foreclosure prevention bill that I put forth that allows people to get into a payment plan for their taxes, to this affordable water rate that we will be creating in the next year, we need to send a very strong message to everyone, as we've always done in this council, that we wanna protect homeowners and that we respect our ratepayers and our taxpayers in the city of Philadelphia. So I'm with Councilman Jones. We continue to put out extremely thoughtful policy in this council, and I look forward to coming back from the summer and tackling some issues so that next year and as we transition into a new mayoral executive team, that poor people and issues in our neighborhoods continue to be on the forefront in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
On another note, to all the fathers in here, my first year as a dad, just wanna say Happy Father's Day, enjoy yourself, real men do real things, so I'm gonna look forward to enjoying my day with my boy. So all the fathers in here, Happy Father's Day, enjoy yourself.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
So, Councilman, we save the best for last, but I would like to say a couple of words, one that you are closely approaching the record in the number of elections in the space of three years.
As pointed out in the paper this day.
Yeah, you know, I'm, you know, but no, just put on a serious note, I just wanna, you know, say, you know, how much I enjoyed having you here and, you know, working with you up in Harrisburg, and commending you on your ability to transition from Harrisburg to city council, and you clearly indicated, and you understand, there's a big difference down here, I mean, because in Harrisburg, we talk about the fact that you're not even allowed to be on the floor, let alone, from time to time, we see constituents literally sitting in our seats. This is the arena, but in spite of the difference between Harrisburg and local government, you dealt with it capably, and I wanna commend you for that. And I also wanna say that we look forward to your continued leadership. One of the things I thought, I think I even said it on a commercial when you were running for office, about how you fought for us in Harrisburg, and then you fought for us here, and I look forward to working with you again up in the General Assembly, because I know you will continue your leadership. And I do wanna say one last thing, I want you to look out for a friend of mine, my little sister, Ms. Donna Bullock, a member of my staff, who has started her first phase of embarking on, which I hope to be a very, very successful tenure, and my congratulations and my condolences, because that's a special place up there, so, and I know you-
She'll be in good hands, no doubt.
I know she'll be in good hands, but, so, congratulations to her for starting that process, and my good friend and buddy, look forward to dealing with you up in the rotunda up in Harrisburg as we move forward, and great job, you did a great job, and you were a real contributor to the things that have been happening here, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I recognize Councilman Nielsen.
Well, Mr. President, unfortunately, my prepared remarks, most everybody tread on them, so I'm gonna have to go on the shorter version. And today, we passed numerous pieces of legislation, none more important than school funding. And as you mentioned, Mr. President, a year ago, all summer long, we walked those halls and we beat those doors down to try and get what's right for our kids. We tried to get the school funding from the Commonwealth, and as council prepares for summer recess, I won't be headed to the beaches. I hope to be driving back up the turnpike to make certain that our voices are heard here in Philadelphia. So today, it's with a heavy heart that I must say goodbye to city council. Later today, I will deliver my resignation to you, Council President, because as of 5:00 tomorrow, I will be resigning from office. I wanted to say thank you on the record to all the Philadelphians for giving me the privilege to serve on city council, along with every member for welcoming me and embracing me as I joined. I will forever treasure our friendships and our time together here as we served the last 10 months together. Please be reassured that if successful in this new venture, I will work hard to lift the hurdles that we struggle with every day in city hall, as Councilwoman Sanchez quite pointed out. What the public doesn't realize, that many things we attempt to fix in order to make Philadelphia a better place for all of us, is preempted a lot by state law. We wanna change lives, but they won't let us. So I will take this experience and knowledge back up the turnpike with Donna, of course, if I'm successful in a journey I'm about to embark on. I also wanna thank those within city hall walls, because we all know without them, not much we could done, our phones wouldn't get answered, doors would stay locked, because there's just not enough in the time of the day to do this by yourself, and the staff is who makes this happen. People say that you're only good as those you surround yourself with, and we all know it's a true statement. I've been surrounded by the best. Pat Parkinson, Daniel Alcubis, Brittany Bradley, Ryan Raker, Sean Dillon, and John Capella, and my interns, my two Briannas, better known as B1 and B2, Abel, Ashley, Michael. I thank all of them for their hard work and their dedication, not only to me, but the city of Philadelphia, they give up everything, weekends, nights, to do the work for us. I wanna point out that everyone, that as a public servant, there's nothing more important than having the support of your family, for they give up the most of all. My wife Doris, my sons Kevin, Steven, Ryan, Eddie, Bobby, they make all this possible. They constantly push me harder to make certain that we better the lives of everybody, and so when they're ready to have children, as a couple of them already do, as we know, I'm a proud grandfather, too, so they can call Philadelphia their home as well. It really hits home, because like last summer, after I joined council, my son went back to school, I got a call from his teacher and said, "How's it feel now that your dad's a city councilman?" He says, "You know, he's not home as much as he was before, but I got a chance to go to work with him, and I spent the time with him." And he said, "It's okay, he helps a lot of people, but at the end of the day, he's my dad, but he's helping people who need it more than us. We'll do okay without him a few nights a week, and on weekends, we'll survive." That's what pushes you to do public service, when you get stories like that. So why I promised not to speak longer, go off script, Mr. President, I got it, I'm not gonna close by saying goodbye, for together, all of us will continue to try and build a better Philadelphia. So until next time we see each other, may God, God is right. So until next time we see each other, may God, God is right, and keep us safe, and I hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable summer. See you in Harrisburg, President.
Thank you, sir. Actually, probably see you soon, next week.
Yes, and if I may, if I may adjourn the last council session, I'd be honored, Mr. President. I know it's Councilwoman Reynolds Brown's job.
I gotta check with Mr. Decker. I don't know if we're authorized to do that.
Decker's in the other room. We won't even know it.
All right, all right. Before we do that, I just want to thank every member here for your continued awesome job, moving ahead with a very aggressive substantive agenda, going in places where no other council ever did. And I know that sounds like that Star Trek thing, but really, you all have done that. And I just want to commend all of you for all the wonderful work that you've done over the last session. So as we end the fiscal year, hope that we all have a very fruitful offseason, and that's what I like to call it, because you won't be on vacation, you'll be out working in the streets, touching with your constituents. So guys, congratulations and thank you all again for the support that you've given the city council of Philadelphia, the great work. Sir, what do you need to do now? You need to...
Well, thank you, Mr. President.
You gotta come, no, you gotta come up here. You wanna, you gotta call for an adjournment?
I will, yes.
All right, you gotta come up here.
Damn.
All right, we're going, where's Hal? I know we're breaking the rules. Is it okay? All right, all right. All right, but stick, you gotta stick to the script, though, Councilman. Right here.
I got it.
You got it?
I got it. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 10th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. It has been moved and seconded that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 10th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it? The ayes have it? Why you have ayes instead of ayes? Wasn't real good with vowels. The motion carries. Thank you very much and enjoy your summer. Thank you, Mr. President.